Our repotting meeting in order, please rise to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Present.
Alderman Logan?
Present.
Alderman Snow?
Present.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Present.
Alderman Schuneman?
Present.
Alderman Kleckler?
Present.
Alderman Folsom?
Aye.
Alderman Sabaka?
Present.
Eight present, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we begin the meeting and get to audience requests tonight, I would just like to send our condolences out to the family of Frank Yaklich, his wife Kathy, and his four children, Greg, Matt, Eric, and Valerie. We've been working with Frank very diligently on the Sesquicentennial Committee. He is a historian, he is probably one of the most knowledgeable people there are about the history of the Hanipen Canal, how it came to be, how it was built, how the design features were used in the construction of the Panama Canal. He was going to be presenting a historical presentation for us during the week, and we're very saddened to hear of his sudden death last Saturday. So, our thoughts and prayers go out to Kathy and the children, and we will miss him, and it was a pleasure working with him on the Sesquicentennial events. First order of business is audience requests. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on an issue that stands before us tonight? If so, please step forward. Hearing none, we'll move on. Community affairs, Ms. Blans not here this evening. The consent agenda, anyone have any request for any of the three items to be removed before vote is taken? Mr. Clerk, please.
Approval of the minutes of the June 20th, 2017 regular council meeting. Approval of the bills as presented. Approval of boot drive for MDA on Saturday, August 12th, 2017, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the intersection of First Avenue and Third Street for the Rock Falls firefighters.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Logan, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any questions?
Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Schuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka?
Yes.
Eight aye.
Thank you, we have three ordinances for first reading this evening. Without objection, we'll put them all into one since it's just first reading. The chair would ask, has anybody in the council request any of them to be removed for further Hearing none, Mr. Clerk if you would please.
Approval of ordinance 2017-2326 repealing section 34-402 extraction operations. Approval of ordinance 2017-2327 amending section 34-126 to remove quarrying of sand and gravel. Approval of ordinance 2017-2328 amending chapter 32, article 2, section 3227b supplemental or additional charges for additional services.
Make a motion to approve the three ordinance, 2326, 2327, and 2328 for first reading.
Motion by Mr. Snow?
Second.
Second by Mr. Reitzel, excuse me, Reitzel, to approve the ordinance as presented for first reading. Any further discussion?
Mayor.
Sir.
Just want to point out that ordinance 2328, the version that you have in your packet was basically a preliminary draft of that ordinance. I put it into a more final form and sent it over to the clerk's office today, and there were a couple of minor changes. One of the things was that I added language to include, or to make it clear that if there is an installment agreement for payment of charges, that it has to be in writing. That was not, that was not in the first version that you had. Otherwise, it's pretty much the same, but there were just a couple of minor changes like that.
You should all have the new version on your desk tonight, right now.
With that explanation from council, any further questions? Motion's on the floor to approve the ordinances for first reading as presented. Roll, excuse me, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no nays, pass, first reading only. Proceed to second reading and adoption ordinances, if you would please.
Adoption of ordinance 2017-2317, adding article 6 to chapter 20, open burning.
Make a motion to approve 2317 for second reading and adoption.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Snow, second by Mr. Logan, to approve ordinance 2017-2317, adding article 6 to chapter 20 under open burning. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
No.
Alderman Schuneman?
Yes.
Alderman Kleckler?
No.
Alderman Folsom?
No.
Alderman Sabaka?
No.
Four aye.
We have a time, there's four ayes, four nays, under state statute. This is one of the times that the mayor gets to vote. This has been a long journey, but we're at this end, and I will cast a vote in favor of burning, ban. With my vote, the record will show a five to four vote, and the motion passes. Number two, please.
Adoption of ordinance 2017-2318 amending section 32-510, burning.
Make a motion to approve for adoption.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Snow, second by Mr. Logan, ordinance 2017-2318 for second reading and Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
No.
Alderman Schuneman?
Yes.
Alderman Kleckler?
No.
Alderman Folsom?
No.
Alderman Sabaka?
No.
Four aye.
Again, stalemate, four, four. Chair has the option to vote. Cast a vote in favor of approving ordinance 2017-2318, and amendment passes. Number three?
Adoption of ordinance 2017-2324 adding section 141h43 to allow for administrative hearing of private outdoor swimming pool violations.
Move for adoption.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kuhlmeier, second by Mr. Reitzel for adoption of 2017-2324. Yes, Ms. Schuneman?
I apologize for that, but first reading, but can someone explain this to me?
Yeah, basically, section 1-41 is the provision of the ordinance code that spells out what sections of the code fall into the category of offenses, whether it's a class A, class B, class C, et cetera. When the ordinance adopting the regulations on private outdoor swimming pools was first adopted, that, there was no reference made to that section 1-41 specifying what classification of offense would it be if anyone violated those provisions of the outdoor swimming code. So this just adds the outdoor swimming code as a violation of 1-41h, which I think is class C offense. Class B, as everyone did.
Okay, well, that original ordinance was adopted quite a while ago.
I don't even know when it was initially.
No. It was adopted a long time ago. We've added to that kiddie pool a month ago. So are we targeting kiddie pools, is that, is that the idea? I mean, why didn't we, why didn't we have, have this, when we adopted the original one?
It just wasn't done, that's all I can tell you. I don't know why, it just, Mark suggested that it be included.
It seems to me what we're doing here is requiring the kiddie pools, which we passed as amendment to the original pool ordinance. And I don't, I don't like the idea, I'm not, I'm not going to support this thing. We're going to target people who want to put kiddie pools in their backyard.
I don't think it was targeting, Jim, I think, I think what it was, was there, when it, when it was put into play, if there was somebody to violate, with our participation in the administrative hearing process, there was no way to enforce anything to do with it if they were in violation. There was no way to enforce it because at the time that it was originally written, that portion of the language, many times when we were adding new ordinances, for whatever reason, that are going to be tied to the administrative hearing, those ordinances, we need to make a reference in this section, in the ordinance that says if there's a violation of that particular ordinance, under the adjudication system, that is where the hearing officer will hear it at. And in this case, it just was excluded.
And I understand all that.
Oh, okay.
And, and so now there's 43, this is going to be the 43rd violation that can be heard at administrative hearings, it just passed, and it comes a month after we pass the amendment to put the kiddie pools into this ordinance.
Who have kiddie pools here?
Who have kiddie pools? So we're going to have an ordinance that says about the burning people in Philadelphia, the, the hearing officer too, which is going to be out. Yeah, okay. Kiddie pools is, is having the kiddie, I, I, when it was first introduced in the ordinance.
Don't use, you're using the word kiddie pool, you're talking about pools 24.
I'm talking about kiddie pools. Is that a 24-inch?
24 inches.
24 inches, yeah. Those are kiddie pools. And, and for us to, to make it a crime, a misdemeanor crime, punishable by a fine, to, for people to have a kiddie pool in their backyard, I think is ridiculous. When it came up in ordinance, I said the same thing, and I was told, well, it's part of the code. Well, I, I voted for it, yes, I did vote for it, because it was part of the code. I had no idea we were going to take it a step further and try to start punishing people now that have kiddie pools in their backyard. Let me tell you, I, I've had a lot of experience in this, okay? And I know what it's targeted, it was targeted to try and prevent kids from drowning. Well, let me tell you something. The second highest cause of death among children is drowning. Why is that? Because 75% of the earth is covered with water, and we don't teach our kids how to swim. 90% of those deaths can be prevented by teaching your kids how to swim. So, putting a fence around a kiddie pool isn't going to stop what we're trying to stop here. I think it's ridiculous, and I'm not going to support it.
Thank you. Ms. Schuneman, anybody else?
Is there a way to have it amended, to have the portion in there that, that excludes kiddie pools?
Well, that is, exclude pools of the height of 24 inches.
Right.
This is not the ordinance that establishes the parameters for conduct. This is just the ordinance that says, if you violate any of the provisions of the ordinance regulating what you do with swimming pools, whether it's for a 48-inch, or a 60-inch, or a 75-inch pool, then it makes it a misdemeanor, or a, not a misdemeanor, it makes it a classification under this section of the code. So if you don't adopt this thing, then it creates a situation where you, if, no matter what kind of pool you're trying to regulate, if someone violates the code, it puts in jeopardy whether or not they can be punished under the administrative hearings provisions of the ordinance book. Mr. Schuneman, with all due respect, if you don't like the way the provision is written in the ordinance about that, I think your proper method is to change the definition of pool that is covered by the swimming pool ordinance to make it to a greater depth.
I understand, I, I.
But that hasn't anything to do with this ordinance, in my opinion.
Well, it, well, in my opinion it does, because it's late, it's foul, you know, form follows function. We, we put the kiddie pools rider on there, 24-inch rider on there, so it's now part of that ordinance. And then all of a sudden, a month later, we want to start, we want to put this thing into effect. I understand we have to go back to ordinance and redefine that, if that's what we're going to do, but I'm not going to support making criminals up in their backyard.
These are not criminal provisions at all.
It's misdemeanor, it's a class B misdemeanor, and there are fines that are imposed, they're not a goal. Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
They're, they really are not criminal at all, that, because the city has no power to impose any kind of criminal.
It's not in the criminal code.
No, it's not a criminal code, it's an administrative code, and there is a distinction. There's not any kind of criminal record on anybody if they were ever to get that. I want to make sure people understand that, that this is not criminal, these are administrative proceedings only, and they're like civil proceedings, and that's what they're considered under the law, civil.
It's no different than a grass mowing violation.
Yeah, it's a lot different. It's a lot different.
Similar to old burning violation. Support or support.
We're through that, gentlemen, the ordinance is before us, the motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Roll call please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Schuneman?
No.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka?
No.
Six aye.
The motion carries. Number four, please.
Approval of ordinance 2017-2325 vacation of alley to DeKalb Feeds.
Make a motion to approve for second reading, 2325.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Snow, second by Mr. Reitzel, to approve ordinance 2017-2325 vacation ballot.
Under our, under the only code which gives us the power to vacate the alley or part of the alley, there's a statement in there about no ordinance shall be passed without 15-day notice in a public hearing. That's not true. That statute says that if it's a vacating of a street or an alley in an unincorporated area, then public notice has to be given, but it does not apply when the street or alley is within the corporate limits of the city. That's the only time the notice applies.
Right, thank you.
And also, I would like to explain this a little bit, on everybody's, when we came in for, we kind of got the cold notice on this thing, so I, I went down to DeKalb Feed and talked to them, and what we're actually doing is correcting some problems that occurred in the past, that, I don't know if we want to say it was our building department, somebody, somebody allowed DeKalb Feed to build them off Forsyth on city property. And so I guess we either go in, we vacate the property around and give it back, give it to them where the building is located, or, only what in effect own part of DeKalb Feed, but yeah. This is, you know, I, I wondered why we were, why we're doing it, what it was, and what's it, when I investigated that every, every side of the building was on city property, so, so, we get to the track that that's, I guess, what we're doing now.
In the alley behind what is now Jesse's, there was a section of a building built years and years and years ago that is nine feet over, but it's still, the alley is still cleared and free, but they are nine feet on private property. And there are easements in association with that, because we do have water lines and stuff from off Dixon Avenue, the run of the alley to the buildings along the alley. The other part of it is on the front of the building, where you drive back to the way stairs?
Yeah.
Under there, the one pillar that holds it, again, many, many, many years ago when that was put in, it is, I think it's two and a half feet over, behind the sidewalk, but it's two and a half feet over, and then on the Avenue A side. Biggest part of that was due to, when the railroads got rid of everything, they gave a lot to DeKalb Feed, they gave some to us, much of their buildings were already built in, again, you're correct, they were built on what was still railroad properties at the time, that became properties of DeKalb Feeds for the purposes of building. It just was never laid out, and that's what we're doing, we're cleaning up, cleaning up that street. And we did work with our, we made sure that we worked with the attorney that was working on behalf of DeKalb Feeds, and we requested that our engineering firm be able to review the drawings and stuff that were done by another firm in regards to this project, and it was a good thing that we did that, because there were several things found, legal descriptions weren't correct, and everything else, so those were all corrected, and DeKalb Feed's attorneys, excuse me, DeKalb Feed did pay for our cost on that to get the project done. And the other thing is, we wanted to ensure that the sewer, water, anything that we had running down Avenue A between Dixon Avenue and Third was covered by easements and/or railways and everything else. So, we have, the road that's there will be no wider than the road that now goes from Third, excuse me, from, where Avenue A project ended going towards Dixon Avenue, that sort section behind the IFH building, where the city parking lot, substation, that road width is the same road width as, that's behind DeKalb Feeds now, so, yeah. Was just cleaning up the record, that's what it was. Motion on the floor?
I guess, in, in last, not last, I, I voted against it because I didn't know what was going on, and now I support it.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I would encourage any Alderman, if you have questions when you're reading these packets on first readings, get a hold of us, we, it's not, we'll be happy to share with you, so, thank you very much. So this motion on the floor has been seconded, this is a second reading adoption for ordinance 2017-2325. Is there any more conversation? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Schuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka?
Yes.
Eight aye.
Next, please.
Adoption of ordinance 2017-2329, standing committee rolls.
Move for the adoption of 2329, standing committee rolls.
Second. Motion by Mr. Logan, second by Mr. Schuneman, to approve 2017-2329, standing committee rules. Question? Sir.
I, I noticed this doesn't have a first and second reading. Can that be explained, and why are all of those?
We're just putting this through, because last week, excuse me, last council meeting, we approved the assignments of the committee members, so those committees can't start functioning until this, we need to get going, there's no reason to have a first and second reading. If we do that, it just proposes things for two weeks, so, there are times that things do come through with just a second reading and then adoption, if it's not something that is going to cause a tremendous amount of controversy, if you have questions, sir.
I just, I doubt it, but I, it interferes with the first and second reading.
It went to, it went to the ordinance committee for their review, and they approved sending it through. Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Schuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
No.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka?
Yes.
Seven aye.
The chair would just make note that since these committee rules have now passed, the previously, at the last meeting, the new committee assignments that were approved going to effect, with the exception that, Mr. Reitzel, your committee, current committee will meet tomorrow morning, and then after your committee meetings, the following meetings for the rest of the month and thereafter will be in accordance with the new assignments. One of the things we want all of the chairman to do at their first meetings is to ensure that the memberships of those committees can meet at the times and dates, and if you need to make changes, you know, discuss that amongst yourself, because we really want to have quorums at the meetings, so if, if you need to change the date, I know I was approached by one of our Aldermen that the morning meeting is not consistent for him, and, but wants to serve on the committee, but it would need to be changed, so I told him to discuss that with the chairman, so, so, that's something you're going to have, that's something you can work at at the committee. Fourth word?
Okay, Your Honor, I just have a question.
Yes, please.
Isn't too late for me to make a motion about this section that we just covered?
The motion's, okay, be a little bit more specific.
Okay, what I wanted to do is just make a motion with the burn, the ban, the open burning, is to send it back to committee so that we could actually adjust the time when they had to actually put their fires out.
What we talked about, for?
Exactly. So is this the time to do it, or do I wait till later?
No, this isn't the time, this is a pass, but what you do is ask that that be put on the agenda at the next ordinance committee?
Okay.
For that section that we talked, that you had asked me.
Okay.
Obviously, we talked about, the section that you had inquired about.
Okay.
And then the ordinance committee can address that.
Okay, perfect.
And if they do, then that becomes an amendment to this, if, if they still move it forward.
So then later on?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Very well. And that would be the case with any, any of these that are passed, that there's something that comes up, month, week, two years from now, any amendment to any ordinance, it runs through the committee.
Okay, thank you.
All right. City Administrator.
Your Honor, first I'd like to ask for, in your packet you have three employees, Joy, Colbert, Pam Henderson, and Amy Stokoe. These were all people that, well, Joy's always been an hourly, but her role just changed due to the consolidation of the police dispatch centers, and Pam and Amy were both part of the telecommunications bargaining unit, which that contract ran out the end of April. As such, we were advised by our legal counsel to hold back on doing their raises until such time that the consolidation had happened. It did, so I would like to ask that these three employees be granted a 3% wage, 3% increase, which, which take them to the hours that you have, or the dollar amount that you have in your packet, and I would like to make that retroactive to June 26th.
I would move to support the, the wage changes of 3% as outlined at the back.
Second. Motion by Mr. Logan, second by Mr. Kuhlmeier, with, with approval of the new police personnel wages as outlined in the packet, this evening, 3% increases, a retroactive to the 26th of January.
And this is an issue of fairness.
Correct. Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Schuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka?
Yes.
Eight aye.
Second tonight, Your Honor, I would like to ask for approval of change order number two from Willett Hoffman &amp; Associates for work at the RB&amp;W Riverfront Park Phase Two.
Motion. 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 I'd just like to understand how we came up with a change order amounting to somewhere
in the area of $480,000, and the work's already been done, and everybody's left, hey, you know, a work order to me is something that you see that, that needs an extra 10 feet of paper or something on here, I mean, this is, this is a third of the total, total contract, and sometimes in your contract, there's no order of contract, and it's just a change order. And I think the change order should be done before the work is, is done.
Where did you come up with $400,000?
Well, there were $203,000 of deletions and $277,000 additions, so, working all that change on it, I didn't say it was all an increase, but there were, there were changes in order amounting to $480,000.
No. That's incorrect.
What's that?
That's incorrect. This change order, I think the total was a change order, the difference ended up being, do you remember how much it was off the top of your head?
$73,348 is the difference in there, however, there were deletions amounting to $203,000 and additions to $277,000, and that's where we come up with the $73,000. I, I wasn't aware that anyone was, that this council had the authorization to make any kind of change in that way, no, evidently no emergency situation or anything of that nature. And I think, I think it's part of our responsibility to gain control of this situation or otherwise, there, there's no sense in having budgets and no sense in bidding this out and, and anything else, and, and, the only thing I can say is I don't, I don't see that it's acceptable to operate in this manner of changing the contract, having the work done, and then expect the, our, our organization to, to approve that, and say, well, by any means we'll just, we'll just approve whatever's been done. The way I understand it, we don't have anybody that can, can even make the $73,000 authorization without council approval. We've already done it, we've already paid for it, we've already had the work done, so contractors home, and... contractors home and that's, it's probably wrong.
If I understand this correctly, all of these sheets of paper that are in here, and I guess maybe Mr. Freckenstein ought to explain it, my understanding is that this is just the paperwork for the different pieces of this phase all along, they don't all add up to be change orders. That's the way I understood it. Am I wrong?
No, I agree that's correct. These were changes that were made, the project went along, the addition of sodding instead of seeding, the addition of the burns for black germs and mulch. That wasn't in the original contract, but we decided that, that's what the city wanted to do, so that was added. Probably the biggest change was, we added building in there, one structure, the control building, and we substituted the stage for the, for the control building. And I think some of this was, was expediency to get it completed prior to the substitution of that, I guess that was the urgency to, to get it done. So, to circumcise it, probably did put the cart before the horse a little bit, but I think the city still got to do everything.
I'm not quite getting the value, I'm not quite getting the work, but I see some of the documents have, have dates on them back in September and I, I think it, you know.
Come on, first, first, first question I would add, Robin, where does the total project with the change order fall within the budget that this council adopted?
I could, I'll go up there.
We just, it was just figured out the section.
That was a lead and it wasn't planned, but now that you're there.
The total, the total amount awarded for the contract was 1.3-
This is Phase Two.
Yeah, this is Phase Two. The Phase Two, not, not including the Phase One. The total amount awarded was 1.34 million dollars. By the time everything is now all said and done, we project that that dollar amount will be 1.359 million dollars, or about $19,000 more than what was originally awarded in the contract, or about one and a half percent. And again, it, it was because of additions. Originally, we were going to have a separate contract for landscaping. That fell by the wayside, a lot of the trees and the shrubs were donated, but part of that landscaping was to be, to construct those burns. So we added that to the original contract to, to have that done. And again, the biggest change is, was substituting the stage for the control building. And I understand, you're not, you're not questioning all of that, you're, I think questioning the process.
Correct. The things that we followed or failed to follow in change order.
So, so basically what, what you're saying is that there is a change order being requested for $19,000?
I, I guess if you're looking strictly at dollar value, yes, that would be, that would be correct.
The only question that I would have is, you mentioned sodding versus seeding, and I thought that we were going to seed this, where did that come from? Is that, are there a reason for that?
We had in the contract temporary seeding and mulching to be done in the, at the end of the fall of the year, November, whatever, 2016. We decided not to do that at the time. And then when we had meetings in spring to talk about how we were going to make it green, again, we decided to put sodding in and not do seeding at all. The reason for the sodding was we thought it might be better established come the end of July than, than seeding.
I think this is reflective of any of the projects that we take on that, that are bid out and there is a, awarded a bid. And then during the course of the project, I can't think of any projects which we don't have additions and, additions and deductions and change of this pipe or change of that pipe. And once those projects are approved for the dollar amount, our due diligence is to make sure that whatever, and in this case, we're $19,000 over, which is only one and a half percent, that's, that's really nothing. And the more is that we get the projects done within the parameters of what was approved with bids. If, I'm hearing that, the thought is that we would like to see that every time there's change orders in projects that go to committee or come back here, these projects will just drag on and completions won't happen, whether it's sodding or seed or a pipe or a hydrant or something at the sewer plant or whatever, they just will drag on if we have to ask for either the committee and/or this council, the committee recommends it back, to approve the change orders as we go. Because also within those approved ordinances is timelines for things to be done and penalties that they're not done.
Right.
And those amounts weigh more than the one and a half percent.
Sure, and, and if, you know, if you have a liquidated damages in there for a completion date, but you have to tell the contractor he's got to wait a week, two weeks, or four weeks to get an answer on his change order, it can be pretty tough to enforce, enforce that completion date. But again, this was, this was a very unusual situation because of the SESCW sent that I believe.
I, I will say for my part, Alderman Kluckler, when I came here, we were at the very end of the sewer plant build. As a matter of fact, it went online the week that I started. So I took my role, how it was occurring then, or change orders were happening, and change orders always came afterwards. Administration is left to make calls on things as they pop up, but there was no way to actually do a construction project or to keep a contractor if, if, working if we were, were having to do that. So that's what I took my, how I learned the process here, was that once the contract was awarded. Now, if it's, if it's one big thing that is, is going to be something major that won't shut down the project, you know, then we've emailed committee members at different times when, and I think it happened a couple times with the sewer plant when I was dealing with that. But it's always been this process. So I was just following, that's, that's how we've done them, either on road construction projects. You guys do get the change orders after the fact. And so it's basically just mostly me as the administrator, mayor is in on a lot of those with me, and just make the, the judgment call and, and move forward with the project.
I think in this project in particular, a prime example would be the fact that the control building was not done.
Yeah.
Instead, we chose to spend that money that would have been spent on that, on the amphitheater. So you just swap the costs. If we would have done the amphitheater and said, well, we're still going to build the controlling building and added another $200,000 or $300,000, that certainly needs to come here because that was going to take us down a path of being a little budget.
A great deal of that decision was driven by the AusLID grant.
Correct.
The DNR established with us that the two highest scoring parts in the AusLID grant was the bike path and the entertainment venue. So in order to get our other $200,000 of the AusLID grant, those two things need to be completed. So we were either going to go ahead and build the control building and then turn around and ask you guys, okay, where are we going to get a half million dollars to build an amphitheater, or how much ever it is. That's why that decision was made, and it was made purely to, on the financial part of to get the rest of the AusLID grant. And I think in retrospect, we'll look back and be happy that the stage is there because we actually have a stage to have events, but that's what was part of driving that. But as far as process goes, I hope that explains to you at least where I'm coming from with these projects. There were some things, they used to bring pay estimates before the council, which held up contractors and caused some problems along the way. And I had asked the council when I came in, as once a project was awarded, if I had to bring back every pay estimate. And it was no, it was just the change orders that needed the council approval, so.
I just think the change order did come in, you know, somewhere other than eight, nine months later.
None of these changes were done in September.
Actually, right on here, you know, they start out in September of last year, talking about stuff.
Yeah, I think those were relatively minor items, though, weren't they? Those were just like, uh-
I'm not debating the minor or the major, I'm just saying that this change order started in September of last year and continued on until July of this year, when we're asked to approve it. And I don't agree the fact that we awarded $1.4 million for this contract, that we can throw anything out of the contract that we want to, as long as we only spend $1.4 million. That's like, that's like taking an authorization for two new dump trucks and somebody decides, they had this nice sweet street sweeper over that we here like to have, so we brought home a street sweeper and said, we still spent the, the same $225,000, so everybody should be happy about it. And that, that's the two, the two points that I don't, I don't believe that we properly have with this.
All right, thank you. Any other? Thank you, Brian. Motion been made and seconded to approve the change order number two as presented by City Administrator. Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler?
No.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Your Honor, I have one final thing.
Oh, please.
On a lighter note. Dick and Lori Simon had their first grandchild yesterday that came in with a bang. So Ryan and Valerie had a little girl born yesterday about 1:00 in the afternoon. So just want to congratulate them.
Mr. Ardeni.
Just wanted to let you guys know that IML will be coming up. There was an IML magazine in your, in your mailboxes if you want to look that over. And let me know if you're going to be going to that. And then also, maybe by next council meeting, we might be paperless. Something to look forward to. Might be paperless by next council meeting, hopefully.
In your left capture, in and being logged.
Oh, okay. I-
Anything else?
That's all, thank you.
Nothing to mention?
Thank you. Mr. Freckenstein. Reviewing your notes? Mr. Cox?
Nothing to mention.
Mr. Simon, I know it's not here. Commissioner Pacelli? Thank you. Chief Hook? Mr. Sears, your vacation? Mr. Spink? Thank you. Thank you. No?
Come on.
Got the whole run, hitter.
Well, this weekend is going to be incredibly busy. We have a lot of things going on. So I actually created a tour. I'm calling it the Extreme Summer Challenge. It's both on Saturday and Sunday, because we have, every Saturday, we do have the Twin City Farmers Market, we have the Rock Falls Farmers Market, but it's a great way to kick off breakfast, get some produce, see what the farmers markets have to offer. Then we have Touch a Truck, that's from 10 to 2. River Chase is from 10:30 to 5:00. Now that's Saturday and Sunday. And then we also have the Rock Falls Antique Tractor and Engine Show Cookout, and that's from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. I have all this information on the Visit Rock Falls website. Goes into detail of the tour and everything that each event has to offer. And then Sunday, I saved for the Whiteside County Barn Tour. Now that's also Saturday and Sunday, but on Saturday it's 9 to 5:00 and on Sunday it is 9 to 3:00. I'm going to take tons of pictures. I'm going to post them. I encourage anyone and everyone, whether you're in town, out of town, to try this tour. It should be a lot of fun. And an update for Bass Pro Shop Big Cat Quest and Rock Falls Outdoor Show, we had close to 1,000 people both days, 61 boats, and unfortunately, no one beat the Illinois state record for catfish caught by hook and line. But there's always next year.
Final weight?
There's always next year.
Do you have the same truck or a bigger weight back here?
Well, I'd like to think it's a newer truck.
Do you know what the final weight was on the mini cat?
Uh, that's an excellent question.
Total weight, Glenn, or individual largest?
Individual largest.
36.8.
Yeah.
36.8, something like that, Jeff. That is true.
And I understand that they were released at the upper and lower and the middle?
You're correct, they were released.
And I think the public needs to know that, too.
They were released.
Yes. That's right.
Not one of them was. And we're hoping next year to have it on a date that is not so close to spawning, so there'll be more fish to catch and bigger fish to catch. Any questions?
Mr. Reitzel?
Public Works Meeting, 8:15 in the morning here in council chambers, and also on by the riverfront on movie night. And it's very moving to see the families sitting on blankets and sitting in the seats enjoying the riverfront.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kuhlmeier?
Yes, tomorrow, July 6th, is Louis Belson's birthday. He was the world's master of jazz designated in Switzerland and Rock Falls, one of the most illustrious sons of Rock Falls. Born on 8th Avenue, and he, he was born in 1924, for anybody that would be interested. So that's, that's my comment.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shuneman? Oh, I suppose we have to go back to Mr. Snow. Thank you. Mr. Shuneman?
Birthday wishy. Happy birthday, Mayor.
Yeah.
One for my wife, a beautiful bride. Happy birthday, yesterday, and congratulations to Grandma and Grandmother. I know they're very proud.
Yeah.
Just wanted to correct an incorrect statement that was put out at our last meeting concerning the burning down on the island. We did have trees down there on the 13th and the 14th, and they, they were burned, so the statement that we haven't heard for several months was incorrect and therefore I would just like to correct that statement.
Mr. Folsom?
Nothing, I'm there.
New person.
Okay. Is this where I tell you that, that the next meeting I'd like to have put on the agenda about the, um, a motion?
Goes to the ordinance committee. So you need to get with-
Later.
-city clerk.
Okay.
And have that put on the ordinance committee.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll catch on, don't worry. May take a while, but hell is there.
I have all the confidence in the world, you are.
Then I have nothing, thanks.
All right. Under my report, got limestone building. Robin, you want to take the lead on this? I can, you can fill in, I'll try to fill in your blanks. Go for it.
The information's the important thing.
Demolition on the limestone building will begin July 17th. West First Street will remain open during demolition. However, all access to the lower dam will be cut off from both the east and the west We are asking that if people want to watch demolition, that they sit over in Bowman Park and watch the demolition. We're not encouraging people to go down there either by foot, just for safety purposes. Green demolition seems like they work very long hours. They could be starting demolition in the morning, it's early 6:00. They've been known to work 12 and 13-hour days. And so we're just asking people to be patient. It'll be three to four weeks, in and out. As you recall, this is asbestos mitigation as part of it. Water will be applied to the building during the demolition and then TerraCon will be on site, there will be a trailer there, and regular air quality tests have to be run and reported since this is asbestos mitigation. So anytime we ask that, you know, we just ask people to be aware that, that we're doing this.
So, anytime we ask that, you know, we just ask people to be aware that we're doing this in all the proper ways, but there is always that risk out there. And other than that, Mayor, I can't really think of anything else.
Okay. Nothing else to fill in. I know that anytime we even talk about reducing the traffic flow minimally or in whole to the lower dam parking lot, it's like upsetting the IDNR values of the city. But this is very necessary. Was looked at to put fence up and try to restrict probably three-quarters of the area. And if we're going to be that restrictive and with equipment and everything else, it just makes more common sense to block off everyone being down there and keep West First Street open. So, I know that wall eyes will be running and all the other things, but this is necessary to get down an eye sore that we've had for a long time in the safest manner as possible. There will be a fire hose, even though West First will be open, they're going to put ramps on it so that they aren't driving over the hose while they're utilizing it. But for the most part, we're just asking everybody's patience, as Robin said, to get this project down. And I kind of got the sense from Mr. Green's team out here that if they get the biggest share of the building stuff down and they're just doing leveling work and stuff like that, the parking lot and stuff could get opened back up, but we're not going to say a specific date. We need to just play it by ear and see how it goes.
I think probably the only other thing to add is that people need to be aware that if they think they're going to go down there and go down in the rubble in the middle of the night, you know, crawl over the fence, they will be arrested for trespassing. Everybody and their brother wants a star. The stars are not going to be laying down there for people to go and pick up. So, they just need to know for their own good, they need to stay out of that area day or night, so...
And the only other thing that we would have been remiss not to mention, if there is anyone that would like to get some of the limestone, they should contact us here at City Hall so we can start a list, and we'll give you a call because limestone will be piled up down there, and as long as it clears the environmental issues and stuff, if there's somebody that would want some limestone or something, they need to call and let the city know. Because once again, if people are found just down there taking from the site, it's not going to be a good thing, so...
Does the city have any use for that? I thought they'd all get haul away.
Haul away?
No. As a matter of fact, as part of the grant, that we have to have a repurposing plan for it. What we're, really, nobody knows how that limestone's going to come off. It could powder. I mean, we really don't know on a 150-year-old building how that's going to come off, because you know that's brick and limestone mixed. We just don't know. And it's going to be a mixture when, if there is some that's available to residents, it doesn't mean it's just going to be pure limestone. It could be a piece of limestone attached to a brick. So, but we just don't know. And we're going to wait and see how it comes off. And if there's some that we can salvage for ourselves, we will first. I mean, we'll get what we want first, but...
Yeah, because they're not going to gently try to bust the limestone out of the process. The building's going to come down, and however it comes down, then it'll be separated accordingly. So, we'll just have to see how it goes. The only other things that I have tonight, real quick, getting somewhat repetitive, but it's important to keep it out in front of the public. Our Sesquicentennial starts at the end of this month. The 24th is the opening of the Time Capsule down at Stewart Park. Public should know that the Sesquicentennial store is open uptown at 110 West Second Street in Rock Falls. We encourage them to stop up there and see what's going on. The Sesquicentennial is the 29th of July through August 5th. The 29th is the ball that evening. Would encourage you all to get tickets for that. They're on sale at the store uptown and/or here at City Hall. Wonderful evening of getting an opportunity to be seeing some of the first, to see the Time Capsule items, to participate and watch the finals of the Smith Sesquicentennial be crowned, and then enjoy a wonderful evening of dinner, and then a couple hours of music and entertainment and dancing from Class Act II, which played with Mr. Belson when he made his last performance here for his birthday. So, we're looking forward to that. And then there's a riverfront event on Sunday, the 30th. The area churches, handbells, choirs and stuff are getting together. That'll be a free concert in the park along the riverfront. That'd be from probably 5:30 till 9 o'clock. A wide variety of things going on there. And then the other night in the park will be on Friday, August 4th, and that will be the night that the Rock Falls High School Alumni Band will be getting back together to play, the alumni drum line, the high school band, and the Sterling Rock Falls Barbershop Quartet. There'll be four entities putting on a concert in the park that night, again, free, probably about the same starting hour, so... And then on Saturday, the 5th, is the Street Dance uptown. That'll start at 3:00 in the afternoon till about 8:45, 9:00. And then the fireworks display will be probably about 9:30 or so. And we're encouraging people to be involved in all these activities. And we'll be having open houses every day at one of the city utilities, either the wastewater treatment plant, the electric plant, the fire police department, whatever. Everybody says, "Where does our money go? How is it spent? How did we use it?" This is a chance to go to the facilities and see firsthand what is there. So, those are all listed on our website, as is everything else to do with the Sesquicentennial. So, please plan on participating. We're up to nine class reunions that are all coming into town that week. It's going to be a wonderful week, and I, anybody that hasn't been here in 10 years is probably going to ask, "Where are the RV and W went?" So, I think it's going to be a wonderful opportunity to showcase that area and visit with some old friends, so... That's all that the Chair has tonight. If there is nothing else to come before us?
Where are you, Derek?
Mr. Folsom? Mr. Reitzel? You've got to be pushing, man. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close the scene. Aye, sir.